Welcome to the City of St. George. We call this meeting to order. It's a regular, or St. George City Council, regular meeting in June, July twenty-second, twenty-two-five, five p.m., St. George City Hall. Is all we can do with state political agreements.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call, Councilman Calvert.
Here.
Councilman Murrow.
Here.
Councilman Marcello.
Here.
Councilwoman Cook.
Here.
Councilman Hemmle.
Here.
Councilman Dilligent.
Here.
Everybody is present in the countercourse. We have the floor. Approval of the minutes of the July eight, twenty-two-five council meeting. All council members have received these minutes and reviewed them. Council making motion to approve by Hemmle, second by Murrow, any opposition to that? Here are none. The minutes have been approved. The monthly financial reports. Scott.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. You have in front of you a copy of the monthly financial report for the month of June. The way we organize this report, it gives you monthly information as we progress through the year. If you look on page two, that is our current status. So it's basically like a balance sheet report, shows what we have in the way of funds on hand, and what our current accounts payable liabilities are, receivables, and so forth. And then if you look on page four, this breaks down by month, what we've taken in as far as revenue, and what we've spent each month. This particular report on page four is through the end of the fiscal year, through June thirtieth. So all of our operations from October until June are represented there and broken down by an expense category. I can report to you that the city is within budget and we meet the legislative operators' guidelines. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Next item, we're going to have a presentation regarding the commission to the U.S. Postal Service by Ms. Valerie Gibson. She couldn't be here tonight, she was a little bit under the weather. I just wanted to say that you named on this, Valerie has been a longtime contributor to the City of St. George, to the epic trade of the City of St. George. So at some point last year, she inquired about the process it would take in order for St. George to be a recognized postal designation. So being the good leader that we all are, we delegated that responsibility to her, and she did an absolutely phenomenal job of kind of answering a lot of questions and figuring out what the process is. So she wasn't going to present on it tonight. What I can tell you about the presentation is that she found two different options for us to kind of get this year to. Essentially, the process will be that I will write a letter to the, you know, to the postal service, asking for this designation. And the way that'll work is that it will be, you know, you will still have the option, if you so choose, where you could use St. George or Baton Rouge, but just like it's always been, you can have, as long, you know, they deliver mail based off the tax code, you can miracle address and, you know, you're free. So none of that will change. The only difference will be that hopefully the next time, once this goes through, you buy something from Amazon, you'll see St. George will be in there as a recognized postal designation. So just letting people know that we're in the process of doing that. Once we get some feedback from the postal service after I submit this letter, probably this week, we'll have some more information on that. All right. Zoning commission ordinances for public hearing on August twelfth, twenty-two-five. These are all introductions. Item number one, zoning commission case number Z two-five dash zero-seven. This ordinance can be zoned four-point-five-four acre parcel located near Highland Road between Perkent Road and the Candace River tracks, from C-two heavy commercial to M-one light industrial, and to provide for related matters to the applicant and his interests, LLC. The zoning commission vote was motion to recommend, approval by Thornton, second by McAllister. The A's were Aguilar, McAllister, Thornton, and the N's were Board Mary. The motion passed, and Z two-five dash zero-seven was recommended for approval. Number two, zoning commission case number Z two-five dash zero-eight, ordinance to rezone a twelve-acre parcel from R Rural and C-two heavy commercial to A-two single-family residential to provide for related matters to the applicant, is Mickey L. Robertson, MR Engineering and Servicing LLC, on behalf of Henry McDonald LLC. The zoning commission vote was motion to recommend, approval by Marion, and second by Thornton. The A's were Aguilar, McAllister, Thornton, and Marion, made it to zero. Motion passed, and Z two-five dash zero-eight was recommended for approval. Next item, zoning matter number T two-five dash zero-five, ordinance to extend the moratorium on new billboards, and to provide for related matters, as proposed by Councilmember Edmonds. A zoning commission vote, motion to recommend, approval by Thornton, and second by Marion. The A's were Aguilar, McAllister, Marion, Thornton, made it to zero. Motion passed, and T two-five dash zero-five was recommended for approval. Number four, zoning matter number T two-five dash zero-six, ordinance to amend Title VII of the St. George Code of Ordinances, the Unified Development Code to clarify public sidewalk curvatures, and to provide for related matters. The zoning commission vote was motion to recommend, approval by Marion, and second by Thornton. The A's were Aguilar, McAllister, Marion, Thornton, made it to zero. Motion passed, and T two-five dash zero-six was recommended for approval. All right, on to items for public hearing and action statement. First item is to amend Title IX, Chapter Four, and enact Title X relative to the special events, and to provide for related matters. Sherri, do you want to give a little overview on that one for us, please?
Previously, we did adopt the ordinance providing for special events and having permits. We had, we've since had some events and found that ordinance to be insufficient to handle the needs of the city. So this is a more comprehensive ordinance. We did a lot of research in Louisiana. We really didn't find a comprehensive zoning ordinance, so this is patterned off of Austin, Texas. But what it does is really to ensure that there's safety, and that the city is informed in advance and can provide input on what services are needed, particularly with very large events. It divides events into three different tiers, tier one, tier two, and tier three, and then there are different requirements that go along with those tiers. Here in St. George, we do have a number of facilities that can house pretty large events and also some public parks. If the facility is zoned for a particular use, which is to host an event, it does not need to get a permit. It's for having an event which is not built out and have adequate parking and different safety measures in place. And Councilmember Gurell submitted some suggested revisions, which I think are good for the ordinance, and also he submitted a suggested heat schedule, which we did not have.
Council, you want to look at the revisions?
Certainly can. I'm looking at included in the binder. But I can tell you, for the most part, the fee schedule is pretty self-explanatory. It's designed to basically create notice of what the fees would be, so it's not to blindside an applicant at the last second. It's referenced in the original event ordinance, so really it's just an addition that needed to be added to it. One of the other requirements was denials currently, any denials, the organizer could appeal to the Nineteenth Judicial District Court. We felt like it'd be better to keep that in-house through our administrative hearing process, and do it that way instead, so we can maintain local control over the event process. For the most part, other requirements were going to be to increase the enforcement beyond necessarily chief of police and just the sheriff's office, but also give the ability for the fire department to have some say in event planning or organizing, as well as anyone designated by city services to have that, so our code enforcement division as well. Outside of that, I believe that covers all my suggestive revision.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. This is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public comment period on this item at this time. If anybody here would like to speak on this item, have your time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period at this time. Now, Sherri, with the included revisions, do we have to make a motion to accept the revisions?
Yes, we need the motion to accept the revisions, and the revisions were circulated to all the council members by email.
Okay, so Council, on you, first step is that we have to make a motion to accept the revisions, as presented by Councilman Murrow. Make a motion to accept revisions by Hemmle.
Second.
Second by Marcello. Any opposition to this? Seeing none. On to the item itself. So now with the amendment to Title IX, Chapter Four, and enact Title X relative to special events and to provide for related matters, including the previously accepted revisions. Council. Motion to accept by Councilman Hemmle.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Cook. Any opposition to that? Here or none? Motion passes. Number two, ordinance to adopt a general fund reserve policy and to provide for related matters. Our Director of Finance is on vacation of all times during the council meeting, but we had Scott here, but he kind of talked through with this policy of the...
Yeah, our finance guy is getting his finances wrecked by the mouse, so. This, this is just a prudent way of setting aside some funds in an event that the city has emergency, that we will have some money in reserve that is protected. As from a family standpoint, these funds would be restricted so that they could be used in an event of emergency and set aside, you know. The procedure that the finance director uses to derive the number that was proposed in this ordinance is thirty-three percent of our operating budget. And so they come by that number with a fairly complex spreadsheet that takes into a number of factors that wasn't just randomly taken, and this is something that the spreadsheet has been developed by the Government Finance Officers Association. Looks at a lot of different things, but, you know, us being a perverting role here, one of the big reasons that you'd like to have a reserve fund is that in an event that a bunch of trees get knocked down, for example, and you have to clear a lot of roadways, the debris monitoring and management and disposable contracts that we'll be talking about a little bit later on tonight, you know, have to be paid for, and this will allow us to make sure, make sure that we have some money set aside, that if that happens or some other emergency, we don't have to deal with, we have the money to deal with. Questions?
Just for clarity, if people understand how the process works, so once that policy is adopted, and let's just pretend like it's going to be adopted tonight, and we start putting money into that reserve fund, explain to everybody how the money comes out of that reserve fund.
Yeah, so the money to come out, so you're setting aside this money into a reserve fund. So the money to come out of the reserve fund, in the event of a declared emergency, the mayor will be able to tap into these funds, you know, hit a formally declared emergency. Usually, you know, municipal level for a mayor to declare an emergency, then that is typically the governor does it first, and the parish does it next, and the municipality follows in suit. Outside of that, then any funds that is for something that's declared an emergency by the council, it goes, it comes out of here the same way you guys put it in, you know, it relies on the council, a vote of the council to take money out of here.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing on this item, so we'll open up the public comment period at this time, if you'd like to say anything on this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period on that item. Council.
Make a motion to pass.
Motion to approve by Hemmle.
Second.
Second by Edmonds. Any opposition? Here or none? Motion is passed. Item number three, twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six fiscal year budget amendment. So I'll take care of this one. So the budget amendment is twofold. One part of it is that we are beginning the process of starting our comprehensive land use plan. We thought we could start out a little bit sooner than what we did, so we actually had two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars modded to our previous fiscal year budget that was unused, so that money rolled forward. So now, instead of it being split up into two different fiscal years, we're going to expand those funds in one fiscal year. So one of those line items in the budget amendment includes six-hundred thousand, which will pay for the cost of building the comprehensive land use plan. The other part of the budget amendment deals with the purchase of property. So as everybody knows, we're in the process of purchasing and building on one-one-two-zero-seven Proverbs Avenue. This budget amendment is for that. So it's essentially amended the budget to the two-hundred-three million dollars to purchase the property. And we'll get into that a little bit later, too, because there's some other things that go along with that, and that's really, that's it. That's what's entailed in the budget amendment. So once again, if anybody would like to make a public comment on this, this is a public item. Have your time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period at this time. Motion to approve by Hemmle.
Second.
Second by Marcello. Any opposition? Here or none? Motion amendment is passed. Number four, ordinance supplementing and amending ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-eight, authorizing issuance of twenty million dollars in revenue notes in the City of St. George, State of Louisiana, to reduce the total amount available to be borrowed. They are under and to provide for related matters. We have our bottom counsel here tonight, Jason Akers, and he will explain this. So on your desk, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I am Jason Akers with Foley and Udell. I want to recognize my colleague Andrew Jarro, who's a few rows back, and next to him, Mary Giffrey with Investar Bank, who's very, very critical to this process we're going to discuss. These two ordinances, back-to-back, numbers four and five, actually relate to the budget amendment that you just had in item three, so I'll address them separately in order of agenda. Item four is the amending ordinance. Back in March, we closed on, or you closed on, a loan with Investar Bank that was a maximum amount of twenty million dollars, that was provided essentially seed funding for the operations of the city while you were still getting ramped up and getting your tax collections in order, and to provide funding for paying for services. That loan was with Investar. It was a maximum twenty million dollars to be drawn down as needed, and today, I believe, this is only drawing one million dollars from that. We wanted to use the same loan, but there's some advantageous reasons to change it up just a little bit. We're able to discuss those items five. But what this ordinance does is amend the principal amount from twenty million down to seventeen million. So it reduces the maximum amount available to you under the loan that's already been closed by three million dollars. We'll discuss that three million dollars at the next, at the next item. All the other terms remain the same. The only thing it does is just reduce the principal amount that can be drawn from twenty to seventeen.
Does anybody have any questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
This is a public item, so we will open up the public hearing period for this item at this time. If anybody would like to make a comment on this, have your time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. Council.
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve by Councilman Hemmle.
Second.
Second by Edmonds. Any opposition to it? Here or none? Item is approved. Next item, number five, ordinance to authorize incurred debt and issuance of not exceeding three million of tax exempt revenue, Series B of the City of St. George, State of Louisiana, and to provide for related matters. Jason Akers, once again.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as the missing three million that you just took away in the last ordinance, we'll put it right back and give it back to you here. This is going to be a Series B of your revenue list. It's going to be very similar. It's still going to be with Investar. I want to thank Mary and her bank for agreeing to change this up just a little bit. It has essentially the same terms with just slight differences. One is that all of the proceeds of three million dollars is going to be advanced at closing, and that's necessary because you're going to use it to purchase and profit. I know that's about to happen. It has a designated and dedicated repayment schedule, because we know that if you're going to draw that amount, then you need to start getting repays in January one, twenty-seven. It is prepayable at any time, so should you come into additional funds, if you want to pay it off, you have the option to do that at your discretion anytime that you want. The prior loan, the Series A, the one that was outstanding, is at a floating rate of prime minus one percent. Currently, that's six-point-five percent, and it's on a taxable basis. And the reason it's on a taxable basis is because the federal tax code allows you, as a political subdivision, as a city, to borrow on a reduced basis, if you're using it for certain qualified purposes, those being for capital improvements, capital expenditure type purposes. That's an oversimplification, but just let me, let me stick with it there. Because you're going to use the prior loan for working capital, that didn't qualify for taxes and treatment. But if you're using it to purchase buildings, that does qualify for taxes and treatment, because that's a capital expenditure. So in workings with Investar, they agreed that they would provide a fixed rate at a taxes and basis, lowers that cost from six-point-five percent currently, it's from four-point-six-five percent. It's a hundred-and-eighty-five basis points savings for you, and it will save you money over the long run if you're willing to do it that way. There are, this is a much longer ordinance than the one before you, but the reason for that is because we have to recite all of the boilerplate language that is necessary in order to make it legal violation binding, so that we can render our opinion when we go to closing, which we're hoping will be by August fifteenth. Scott, you and I will talk about that a little bit later on. So that's it in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer questions now or wait till after the public hearing. If I can just add one more thing, Mayor, before you go to public hearing, the city posted on its website on July eleventh, a notice of public hearing that was intended not just to comply with your regular requirements for introduction and adoption of an ordinance, but also to meet the federal tax code requirements under Section one forty-eight, seven F of Title twenty-six of the federal tax code. So I want to just note that the public hearing that you're about to call to order would satisfy the provisions, not just of your state law with respect to adoption of the ordinance, but also for federal tax purposes with respect to the public hearing that's required.
Well, Jason, you just summed it up in about thirty seconds while we need five turns. But thank you for your diligence and your studentness with the track detector.
Yes, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Three million dollars loan, the billing is two-point-nine-one-five, the other eighty-five thousand, that a closing cost?
It's not going to be entirely closing costs, and if we, if we are able to determine, I think this was the first I had of the actual number, if we're able to shave off a little bit, we'll work with the bank to ensure that we can. The ordinance sets a maximum number for those three million dollars, because it shaved a little bit, and the bank will agree to drop it down a little bit more. If anything else, it just stays there and gets it getting to be for prepayment or to be used if there's a tradition.
That would normally just stay there, right?
It stays there, and since you can repay it any time, it shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you, Jason. I think you're good. Okay. I'll open up the public comment period on this item, if anybody would like to say anything on this item, have your time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period on that item. Council.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Hemmle.
Second.
Second by Murrow. Any opposition to it? Here or none? Item is approved. Item number six, selection of debris removal contractors. So I'll kind of make a statement in conference of six and seven, just for educational purposes of the public. So there's always a lot of confusion with who picks up your debris post-stone. So just so you know, for normal, everyday trash pickup and debris removal in the parish, there's a parish-wide contract that exists for that. In times of disaster, you have to put out a contract for disaster services groups coming to you. So that's what we did here. We put a RFP out, we got several proposals that encompassed the ability of them to come in and clean up all our debris post-stone. And the second part of it, which will get you an item seven, is the monitoring of that debris pickup, which is also required if the money takes back. So item number six, selection of debris removal contractors. We received one, two, three, four, five, six bids on that particular item. All these bids were put into a formula based off of cost. The highest one formula, excuse me, the lowest number was seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars and fifty cents was factored into this formula. The highest one was nineteen-hundred, forty-one, twenty-five cents using this same formula. Before I open up the public comment and before those accounts all, I will say is that in talking with numerous jurisdictions, not only here but other places, it is considered best practice, especially in an area that is, is, it's never, it's always when the next one is going to come through, when you do these contracts to, to contract with multiple providers. Depending on the size and scope of these events, some of these contractors can get overstressed pretty quickly. You want to make sure that we have what we need in St. George. So as the council talks about it, looks through it, the recommendation is based on the best practices that, as far as debris removal, that we would, we would select tonight multiple contractors potentially. So I'll open this up for our public comment at this time, if anybody would like to make a comment on this. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period at this time. Council.
I have a question. So looking at this, Crowder, Crowder Golf is the only one that's local to that region. Is that correct? Then we have one, and they're kind of in the middle, like three hundred. That's the only local, but we can approve more than one. What's the recommendation?
They should take the idea to point at least three. That way, at that point, if you looked at, if you looked at bids, they each have multiple projects or multiple contracts with state agencies at the same time in local municipalities. So if we get in a situation where you only choose one, you run the risk of somebody else taking all those services. And Crowder Golf is Alabama company with an office in Baton Rouge.
Questions? Why didn't we have any local people bidding on this? I know y'all put it up, you advertised. It seemed like the people who got the act, the visitor are out of town people.
I can answer part of that. So part of that is that we utilize central bidding for this. Central bidding is, from what I understand, the most reputable foremost bidding service that exists in the, in the region. So this was put out on a national scale. A lot of these companies are regionally based. I, certain companies did honor, certain companies did not. I don't know if anybody can for sure answer that question, but I can tell you the process that we went through, and I believe it was actually the first contract that we utilized central bidding for.
It was, but City of Central utilizes it, a lot of jurisdictions in this area, Ascension Parish utilizes it. And this is pretty typical on a debris removal contract, is to have, some of these companies, they're national companies or done something in another state, but they have regional offices across the country. The ones on here, several of them have worked in various jurisdictions in this area, multiple hurricanes. Series has worked with City Parish, number of times, DRC, I think was. These are pre-positioned contracts, so they may not get used within the three-year period, or they may get used, and that's one thing why it's kind of critical to have multiple, because if they have too many pre-positioned contracts and the disasters in the area of their contracts, sometimes they don't have enough resources.
I guess that'd be another clarification. Just because we approved three does not mean we're paying three. It means we have the ability to contract as needed with those three, because they were already approved.
That's correct. That's exactly what pre-positioned contracts mean. So these contracts do not go into effect until triggers pull essential. So this isn't something that we pay a monthly fee, pay a retain rate, any of those things. These are contracts that we never, in, you know... These are contracts that we never, you know, we cross our fingers, we never ever have to use them, right? But in the event that a storm comes in and we have debris issues, that's when these contracts will be triggered. So to Drew's point, it's only utilized in the event of an accident.
Just to, I could lay in just a little bit for you, Max, since you asked me that question. I can tell you that anecdotally, I can't know what every contractor knew or didn't know, right? You know, but as Jerry said, this central auction is well-known by all of the people who bid on these types of services. They check it all the time and just give you, for example, I talked with Dustin at Boone Services about it, they chose not to bid on it. So, you know, it's not like people weren't aware of it. But this is going to be in the event of an emergency with a really wide-scale operation. You'd need some vast resources to be able to respond to it potentially, and I just think that some people chose not to put themselves behind that wall on that because for a smaller firm, it could be really difficult to respond in a way that we might require.
Small firms actually subcontract with local, they'll try to find local people. So it doesn't mean that local companies will not be subcontracting. They're allowed to have subcontract.
That's a great point. So they could very well be subcontractors underneath our main contract.
I also wanted to add one of the point two on this and why this process is important. If you don't go through this process, if you don't go through the bidding process, if you don't go through the selection of pre-positioned contracts, then it puts St. George in a position where we would not be able to get a lot of these dollars returned to us by the federal government. So that's one of those things, Bob, is that you absolutely have to check. It has to be put out for bid, you have to go through the whole process. If you don't, FEMA will come in and say, well, I'm sorry, you're out 10 million bucks. You should have went through the process. So that's the other part that's super, super critical when you're talking about this, because we're not talking about a few bucks here. These are waiting contracts, and everybody knows how important it is, especially post-storm, to get things off the road, especially in a place where it's not all that uncommon for us to have back-to-back events. And what happens in back-to-back events? You have an event, and you still have debris that's in your front yards, in your neighborhoods, it becomes a hazard on the secondary side of it. So also to the point of having multiple contractors to be able to potentially facilitate this.
Well, to that point, if you don't have them in place, think about after a storm event, when, you know, you as a local homeowner are trying to hire a contractor, you don't have one in place, you're just waiting in line. And we can't afford to wait in line with other municipalities, other entities. I mean, one of these companies has a contract to Florida State. I mean, you're not just talking about cities, you're talking about parishes, you're talking about businesses, you're talking about entities. So the sooner we have these in place, the sooner we have the option in it's hurricane season, so.
I got a question. So you picked three of these companies, and all three could conceivably be used in one disaster, right? Or not?
It could be. It depends upon how widespread it is or what areas of the city are affected. You do have 16 square miles, but it might be that you have, you know, these contracts can be used not only for FEMA disasters, but if we just have a windstorm that's not a declared emergency and a bunch of trees are knocked down in one subdivision or whatever, that is not covered by our waste management contract.
That's what I was going to leave my next question, because it has to be like a name storm?
These would be the entities that we would use for anything outside of our regular contract, and it might not be a name storm. On a name storm, we could possibly get FEMA reimbursement by having the bid process come on.
Motion to approve the top pesta tree, look straight, Crowder Golf, 3 million spenders.
We've got a motion to approve up in tree care, look straight services, and Crowder Second by Councilman Himmel. Any opposition to that? Seeing none, there's three that have been approved. The next item is selection of contractors for monitoring services for debris removal. So this is in the same thread. When you act a contract like this, you not only have to have, I mean, pre-positioned contracts for the debris removal, but you also have to have a pre-positioned contract for that debris monitoring. That way, you as residents of the city and us as elected officials of the city know that they're going to say that. A lot of these, I think, were born out of Hurricane Katrina and Hurricane Rita, when a lot of people got really, 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 really rich by hauling off stuff that really didn't exist. And so the federal government has come in since then and created some other requirements that you have to have in place, once again, in order to get reimbursed for, you know, for at least stopping names, federally declared storms. So, and that same deal, we had six different companies that put in for this as well. And they were weighted on both price point as well as the ability, how quickly they could respond to a particular incident. Out of the six that put in, two of them were kind of paired together at the top, True North Emergency Management, Volkerd. They had the best price points. The biggest difference between those two were the fact that Volkerd could mobilize in a fraction of the time compared to what True North. I'll also say that both of these companies do have local offices within East Baton Rouge Parish. And I know for sure that Volkerd has done a good deal of work in this particular area. And I know that Laura, excuse me, I know that True North has also done, just like most of these groups, everybody's been in Louisiana. Okay, at one point in time, I know you're in the disaster business, you've been in this state at some point in time. So that's kind of the rundown on those companies for that process. This is a public item, so I'll open it up to public comment at this time, if anybody here would like to speak on that. Can you come up here? Yeah, come on.
I got your name.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Just tell us your name and where you're from.
Dennis Turner. I live in the Old Jefferson area.
Yes, sir. Thanks for being here.
Glad to meet you. Mr. Louisville, former baseball player.
Yeah.
My concern is, having lived here through a number of storms, flood of 2016, Rita, Ida, I lived over in Shenandoah when I came, and the problem was, first off, the priority of the debris was pretty bad. It had a lot of trees. St. George, at least in the area I live, had a lot of trees. I lived right on Coco Green, which is right in front of a canal, Jones Creek Canal, probably some of you know about it. And 2016, it flooded all the way up. I got a five-foot footer, and it still got up into the house. With the, I guess my concern is monitoring, and these companies are multiple companies, they're established in other states. The Gulf Coast is pretty big, and we have had storms 200, 200, plus miles wide that affected a great area. These companies are in multiple states and have commitments to other states. I guess my concern would be how soon they would get to the debris, considering the fact that the quicker you get to the debris, the quicker utilities can get in and restore services, the quicker that medical emergency, if needed, can get through. So with the monitoring, I guess, and then, you know, I just learned something that there's a contract that federal government requires, that you got to have somebody to monitor it to make sure this is done. St. George is a pretty big area. Now it's the largest city in the state. So I'm just kind of concerned about how that works. How many monitors they're going to even have? Are there going to be priorities, according to damage to other states, other regions along the Gulf Coast? I just watched the sad situation about Texas, which I have personal friends that were affected by that area and still are trying to get help done. So I got a concern with how this is going to take effect, to the cost, how that's going to fall back on us residents and services. We've got quite a few, I'm in senior citizen bracket now, we've got white hair all over, but we have some senior citizens that can't get out, in and out. So I guess the, I guess what I'm saying is, has all of this been, I'm from Indiana originally, and I worked with the fire department up there and done some major disasters and situations from Indiana. An emergency, I was on a hazmat, not hazmat, but what we call D-MAT, a disaster medical team. I was a combat medic, so some of that came in. So I understand about triaging and all that. So I guess what I'm, I still have a mindset of that, of, okay, the logistics of everything, and how these priorities are going to be made, communities, neighborhood, streets, and how all of that, because I see, man, it took weeks for them to come over Shenandoah High Street, and we had stuff piled up that high, along with the utility companies couldn't get down there because they couldn't get through. So those are, that's basically my concern, how that's going to be addressed, and who's going to be monitored and how they're going to monitor. If the city is paying for this, so that, I guess that's my comment and my question and my concern.
I think I can answer most of those. Either way, you done with your comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. You can go back. So first, firstly, thank you for your service. Combat medic, firefighter, you know, like you, I spent a lot of time in the fire department. I've been on the front lines of quite a few of these disasters. I can tell you during Hurricane Gustav, I always tell folks a story, when that storm really started coming in, we left in the morning and we didn't get back until the morning. And a lot of it was because of downed trees. I worked at a fire station that was around the corner from Oak Hills, and I felt like we were, I felt like we were never going to leave Oak Hills. So one call turned into 50 calls because one tree fell here, then you got another call here, then you had neighbors coming to grab you here. So it's, I share your concern. I can tell you a couple of things about, so since a lot of these storms, our technological advances have been fairly great. So all these companies that are in here, that are up for approval tonight, have submitted full proposals. I think we asked like a 24-page proposal. Most of them gave us 150-page proposals, and a lot of it is about technology. So we talk about how do you map it out, and a lot of it involves GIS work. So they take a lot of GIS imagery. They can lay it over neighborhoods, they can lay it over subdivisions, they can lay it over the entire city. That way, we have grids, and we know where we're going and how we're getting there, how we're getting things picked up. So they've come a long way, just in the last 10, 12 years in regards to that, as far as getting to the folks that need it the most. The other part of that is this, is that you talk about priorities and who gets prioritized. I don't know any other way to say it than this, so I'm just going to say it. For however long the City of St. George was unincorporated, and within East Baton Rouge Parish, we were pretty far down the priority list, okay? So a lot of those resources ended up in the City of Baton Rouge. I'm not blaming anybody, it's just reality, okay? And there was nobody that was really out there as an active voice saying, what about Shenandoah? What about Old Jefferson? What about Oak Hills? What about, you know, Briarwood? What about any of these, what about Edgewood? What about all these other neighborhoods? So I can confidently tell you today that those days are over, okay? And that's the other part of establishing these own contracts. As far as how they monitor, the amount of monitors that they send in, that's all in our proposals as well. There's a recommended number of monitors based off of the square miles, based off of the size and scope of the particular event, and those are all in the contract. So if these folks aren't meeting their contractual obligations, well, then we're going to have some big problems. I don't foresee that being a big issue. But the thing I can tell you the most is that you have my commitment, you certainly have this council's commitment, and everybody else that wears a shirt that says St. George on it, that those days are over. Those days were over. The days of Shenandoah being picked up four weeks down the line are done, okay? The days of Oak Hills, of being without power because we can't get trees off the stuff for two and three weeks, those days were over. You know, we won't be perfect, and I'll never claim that we're going to be perfect, but I'll claim to you and I'll make that commitment to you today here publicly in a public meeting, that this is one of the big steps in the process of taking control over all that and delivering for you. You know, as far as your costs, and this comes up a lot, especially with folks that have a brain here, right? And they worry about those costs. Those costs aren't going to be picked to you. Those costs are incurred by the city, and in federally declared disasters, they're incurred by the federal government, which we get reimbursement. So I can assure you, you'll never get a bill in the mail for tree removal from the City of St. George, okay? The best way I can answer, I hope I answered all of the concerns regarding that.
He did. I'm a guy who means words, I'm open.
You're my kind of guy. You know, look, we meet here the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, I might see you some more.
To that point, the reserve fund we passed earlier tonight to put that money aside is also part of that process, to have those funds immediately available. So when you do activate these contracts and this monitoring, you have the ability to pay those contractors no, they don't have to wait for reimbursement. It puts us higher up the food chain than somebody else who doesn't have the money up front. So that's positive. This is required for federal government reimbursement, is that correct?
That's correct. Real quick, Drew, I don't have a public comment period, so.
I'm sorry.
Is anybody else here who would like to speak on this item?
Other comments closed.
Sorry, sir. Hello, I'm Chad, live with Volkerd. I'm the vice president of marketing and operations for Volkerd. We appreciate your consideration and the comments that were made. I heard what he said. We're a large company across many states, but I live next door in Ascension, been at most weekends since you started, and our company office, our local office is right north of the boundary of St. George and Baton Rouge. I wish the boundary went a little bit further, but it didn't.
Okay, you can move.
Everything you said was spot on about what we do with the monitoring. Our team that does the monitoring are actually based out of Louisiana, and there's a group of them that, they live in Louisiana, but they're like, they travel around to go where the storms are at. They did Florida, they did Tennessee, they're doing some in North Carolina, and they're applying to Texas right now. So I'm confident that if something happens here, I'd be here right away, and they'd be right behind us. So thank y'all for your consideration.
Does anybody have any questions for Chad from Volkerd?
Yeah, let's talk about mobilization. How important is it? And you said within two hours, can we talk about that process?
I live 20 minutes from here, and the discussion I had with John Lopez, our manager of disaster recovery, was that I would come right away, I'd be here immediately. He's got, Scott's got my phone, I've just known him from being right here, close, local. Y'all would be able to have me right away, and that team would immediately start moving this way. And then I think heard somebody else say something about subcontractors and hiring people to do all the monitoring. Anybody we bring on would be the third tier, it would be me first, and then John Lopez and our full-time Volkerd employees that work disaster recovery would be here within a day or two, and then anybody else we need would follow on. But I mean, you'd have us immediately to monitor, that's not debris removal, that's the monitoring part, to make sure that we're counting the loads properly, that you're, you know, getting full trucks, all that kind of thing, that you're not paying for something that services, you're not getting out the debris removal contract.
Anything else for Drew?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make a public comment on this item? Seeing none will close the public comment period at this time. Drew, did you want to finish?
No, I need to answer my question about mobilization, which I was going to ask about the importance of it, because they're clearly below man on bidding for mobilization time. So he covered that nicely.
Is this also something we would approve multiple services?
I believe the monitoring is just one, right?
I guess you could add one. I don't think it's been, you know, the debris removal, they have to get truck drivers, trucks, and sometimes they have difficulty getting the equipment, so it's not really the same concern with the monitoring company. It's more labor and then a lot of their, you know, the technology that they already possess.
I'm going to make one second there. Good. So just, I think it's important to point out that, you know, in an event of a named storm, where we're looking to get FEMA reimbursement, we can't really start the debris removal until we have the monitoring. So makes a difference.
They have to inspect the trucks before they start picking up, so they have to be here, they have to set up platforms at the debris sites so that they can see the trucks when they're empty. So they have a lot of setup to do.
I make a question, do we approve Volker as a monitoring service?
All right, motion to approve Volker by Councilman Edmond, seconded by Councilman Cook. Any opposition to that? Here are none. Item is approved. All right, that's the end of our new business, open business announcements. City council meeting, our next one will be Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. After that, the next one to follow will be August 26th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Our next board adjustment meeting is Monday, August 4th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Our planning commission meeting is Monday, August 4th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. Zoning commission meeting is Monday, August 4th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. Once again, they're all going to be held here at this location. Also, too, if you'd like to hang around, we have completed our heads of litigation plan, which we've been working on diligently for the last six months. They're having a meeting directly following this meeting for anybody that would like to hear about our heads of litigation plan. I would encourage you to hang around here, though. So that's all that I have. Counsel, do I hear a motion to adjourn? That's the new chair. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Harrell, seconded by Councilman Himmel.
I'll say it.
That's the new motion to adjourn.
Yeah, the chair. That's supposed to say this. We're very fortunate, we have Chad here, he ran Central Parish. And when I say he ran Central Parish school board, nothing was ever done in Central Parish without Chad doing it. They have the top line, they know where he can lock down these schools within seconds. So if he can do that for us in Central Parish, worth any beauty points. Another person we have is what is Bestor Bank. A lot of people don't realize that Bestor Bank started here in Baton Rouge. The CEO slash president lives in the city of St. George. So we are surrounding ourselves with great local people, local companies, that they can care less another town for who they got coming in. And Scott knows how big, especially me, he does, about using local people. But we're lucky to have this many good people that we can depend on. I would say thank y'all for working on this, I appreciate it very much.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any opposition to that? Whoever it is, means the chair, we'll see you on a few weeks.